And the damn place burst within the wall. Okay, we're on the air now.
Hi, good evening. I'd like to call the May 27 meeting of the planning board to order for the town of Newbury. I am John Weiss, Chair of the Board, to my left.
George Morris.
Richard Moss.
John O'Connell.
Martha Taylor, Town Planner.
So we have one appearance tonight and some decisions to make on an application that was here before us. But before we do that, we have meeting minutes from March 18.
All right, does anybody need a copy?
No, no, okay. I have a motion on that, please.
Would you accept the minutes as written? Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. Mr. Bodeman, it's good to see you again.
Same here.
So if you would, this is an informal discussion about a proposed OSRD off of Scotland Road. I think a number of the people here are butters or part of the proposal, I'm not sure, but whatever, we'll get a chance to chat if you'd like to. So I'll just turn it over to you and do as much explaining as you can.
Thank you. For the record, I'm Eric Bodeman with Millennium Engineering. With me tonight is Jenna, Rick, and Michael Green of the Green Companies. They're the developers of this property. The property in question is 157-159 Scotland Road. The two parcels combined are approximately 25 and a half acres. So what we're proposing is an open space development, but as per your regulations, anything over four lots should submit an open space. We want to do that anyways. But what I'll do is I'll walk you through the yield plan, and I'll flip it over on the other side, I have the open space plan. And this, again, I want to hear all your comments. Part of this process is, we started this process back around Thanksgiving, and we started doing the survey, and then the snow came. So it's been six or seven months, and, you know, the developers, Rick and Michael, want to get your sense before they go too far, you know, what your thoughts are, and take any recommendations you may have into consideration and move forward. So as a regular, as a standard subdivision, we have this 21 lots. They're a little bit over 40,000 square feet, 125 feet of frontage. You can see the roadway would come in off of Scotland Road, it'd be a cul-de-sac on one side, cul-de-sac on the other side. And we have listed here a proposed gravel emergency access. That could be a paved roadway if necessary. My thoughts are that we don't plan on building that, so what we label it is not all that significant. The properties would be serviced by septic systems and wells. So that's the...
A common septic or individual septic?
This proposal is individual septics. The open space would be a common septic. Yep.
Have you done any perks yet?
We haven't done any perks. We did some test pits. I think it was the week before Thanksgiving, we just did some informational test pits, and everything was fine. There are some pockets of ledge out there. Anybody familiar with the property, you know, it rises from Scotland Road, and there are some knobs of ledge around. But we, I think we dug eight or nine holes and didn't hit ledge anywhere, actually. There's some good material out there.
And water, how about water? Did you put it, is there any test well or any other?
We did not perk anything. We did not perk anything at this point. But looking at the soils, we're comfortable that it'll perk, that it'll meet the requirements. And that's part of the discussion tonight. If you want to do some random sampling, we can do that. That's not an issue. We don't want to go down the road of...
I mean water, drilling, getting water.
Oh, no, 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 we did not. We did not. So that's short and sweet of the...
So I had a, John, do you have any comments on the yield plan at all?
I don't. The first time I saw it, I tried to keep my mouth shut until I've actually read it.
Anybody else have any thoughts on the yield plan?
I do.
Martha?
Well, here's some comments that I sent to Eric when I first saw the plan, and I think there's at least one lot that may be a little questionable because it's got a wetland coming through it.
Eighteen?
Yes, I...
And it doesn't have the 32,000 square feet of contiguous upland, so that one may be...
Yes, Lot 3 certainly, on this plan, is not a viable lot with your regulations.
And...
And Martha sent me comments, and I didn't want to take the time to change anything because, again, this was just an informal discussion.
Okay, so let's, if we can, on the yield plan, if it's okay with you...
Absolutely.
To go over Martha's comments, which is obviously starting with Lot 3, and then the is, oh, the proposed, you just talked about that.
Yep.
The proposed gravel access.
That is the other... We're looking at the yield plan, okay, that's what we're...
Got it. Second one, okay. And what jumps out at me is her third comment.
Do you really question?
The topo is missing from the area that you want to have as the, I guess, the dedicated open space areas.
Yes.
I think that that needs to be added.
Oh, absolutely. And we have our intention of doing that. What happened was, again, we started around Thanksgiving, got going, then the snow came, and we had got about half of it done. So we understand we'll have to have a complete topography of the site before we submit the preliminary plans.
Okay. Let's get, if we agree with this, any comments on Martha's? Give us a...
Sure, absolutely, take your time. No.
Okay, any comments from other board members on...
As I'm looking at it, I'm not seeing anything I disagree with relative to Martha's comments.
Okay.
I think there's a number of things that are problematic.
George?
Yeah, do you have any comments on a proposed gravel emergency access? I'm not quite with that. That's going to be part of a road, it's also a gravel emergency access?
Well, we're, yeah, we're, at this point, we're not planning on building that, that's the yield plan.
Okay.
We could easily make that a paved roadway, proposed roadway. Our thoughts were that typically fire protection is the big issue, and fire access. If that was a dedicated gravel roadway with a key, a gate, that the fire department is the only one that has the key to, that that would typically work.
So this is only if you have an OSRD?
This is only if you don't have an OSRD.
If you don't.
Right, right.
I don't think you plan on doing an OSRD, right?
Excuse me?
You plan on doing an OSRD?
Yes, yes, we're talking just about the yield plan right now.
I see, okay.
But I think the question is, with this particular yield plan, you'd end up with a tremendously long cul-de-sac if you didn't actually create a through road coming through there. So I, you know, I think, I think we just need to be satisfied that, in fact, you could do the through road for our requirements and get those lots without...
And obviously going down there and looking at the topo coming up. The topo coming up on your other road is challenging from start off.
Yes.
Gets a little better as you go.
And the other side is about the same thing. We haven't, we haven't, again, we haven't surveyed it yet, but it's about the same thing. The property is relatively steep in the front, and then it continues to go uphill, but it's much more gradual once you get above that first hill.
So then give us a minute so we can review us and apologize to those people here in the audience that we just got this...
Where would your, oh, I see, would the septic system be out here, the common septic system be over here?
Yes, yes.
I noticed you had some drill holes there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I'm going to switch over to the yield plan.
Would you, yeah, what I'd like you to do is switch over to the OSRD.
It's there.
Back here.
It comes all the way across.
Is this, does this back onto Martin Burns?
Yep, right there, where your hand is. Where your hand is.
Yep, okay.
If you could give us your reaction to Martha's comments of favor.
Yeah, I don't have it in front of me, but I know one of Martha's comments was about going through the process with the landscape architect and whatnot, and we understand we have to do that. This, we're not trying to not do that. Again, we're just trying to get in front of you to get your feelings before we go and design a whole project to come in here and have you say, geez, guys, this is terrible.
Yeah, I think Martha's comment would be mine on this, is that the site is, is a difficult site in many respects, in terms of its topography, and as you said, some ledge and steepness. And having someone like a landscape architect to look at, well, where is the best place to come in? Where is the best place to lay out open space, which is then, I'm not sure how we'll do this, whether it's dedicated to the town or not, and how useful it is, and whether it looks up to Martin Burns, which I sound reasonable with, and how that all fits in, I think does require someone who would take that kind of look at it.
Absolutely, absolutely. And we're not trying to bypass that process. Again, we do want to get your input. Believe it or not, I've been in front of towns where, you know, the regulations allow open space developments, and they say, we don't care, we don't want to talk about it. And we just wanted to make sure that you're comfortable with the process, you know, what we're proposing. The details are going to be worked out, and one of the things I need to point out is, you know, this one shows 21 lots, which our yield plan showed, which we know that one lot isn't viable on the yield plan. So that would knock that down to 20. I think a later version of this will probably be 23 lots, because what I haven't done here is, there are bonuses allowed for percentages of over 50% of open space. So we have 71% open space right now. So my thoughts are that we can add probably three lots and still be above 50%, you know, be at 65% and meet your, still meet all your requirements. But again, I didn't want to change the plan and all that, I just wanted to make you aware that we're still, there's still a lot of work to do, that's all I'm saying.
And realizing the importance of, you know, the number of lots you can get in terms of the saleability, et cetera. Therefore, the yield plan becomes very important.
Yes.
In terms of what really is acceptable to the board, in terms of what then you can move forward with as a development, so.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay.
Is this going to be open to anyone, or is it just 55 and over?
I think it's going to be open to anyone. I don't think we've had that discussion, but my guess is that it would be a standard development where it's not 50, it's not age restricted. Right now, we're not talking about age.
You, you're part of the developers of Oleo Woods?
Yes.
Project.
Thank you.
And Elzy and the Newbury Board of Citizens. I don't know whether this correlates to that at all, in terms of the location, do you know what I mean, in terms of the type of buyer that you got there, but...
I feel like it could be a similar buyer.
It could be a similar buyer, but it also, a lot of the styles that we're doing in that Craftsman book...
The Craftsman bungalow look, yeah.
Are done with, with a bent towards a first floor master suite. It tends to be more empty nesters because of the design, not because of the...
You mean for here, as opposed to Oleo, which really looked like it was most for a first-time home buyers?
John, where is that development you're referring to?
If you cross some, the car wash, as you're about to get on I-95 on 113?
Oh, okay.
There's a...
Russell Terrace.
Russell Terrace.
Okay.
And then you go through an older 50s, 60s project, and then you all of a sudden hit upon this, and it's all very new, and, and I, well, anyway.
Is this beyond Russell, you go through Russell Terrace, and then, okay, I know that, that used to be Checkaway land years ago.
Yeah, that property actually goes on to Crow's Lane.
Oh, really?
The back of that property all goes on.
Yeah, Crow Lane Extension, yeah.
You could get this to be a 55 and over, that would be around.
So the intention on this, obviously, is to do an open space development. We will get a landscape architect in, you know, immediately to go through the property. We are constrained where the roadway comes in to about here, because it's two wetlands, and we're, you can see we're kind of threading through the wetlands. I would be surprised if that obviously changed. But once we get back here, we'd get the landscape architect's input on how he thinks it should be laid out, and that, that would be our intention. And then there will be a community septic system in the open space.
The topo differential between your lots and the open space is similar, or what?
It's very similar. It's very, again, we haven't done it yet, but it's very similar. This generally comes up all the way to the back, and all the way to the back, and it's pretty level in this direction. This may be a little bit higher than over here, but it's not too bad.
That covers open space, you've got a septic system on it.
Where is Martin Burns on that map?
I believe it does, yeah.
Right. So one of the things that hits me as I'm looking at this, I would like maybe to see something on this kind of a plan that shows the existing homes that are on Scotland Road, and where they're located, and then also Martin Burns and trails that might be on Martin Burns that you might be relating, need to relate to.
Okay.
And that, you can take off a Google map.
Yeah, my thoughts are we'll take this...
Nothing, no major deal.
Take this plant, overlay it over the aerial, and I'll get that to Martha...
Yeah, you know what I mean?
Next week, if you guys want to look at it, absolutely.
Does Martin Burns have a shooting range?
Yes. Well, it's a major hunting area, so...
They do have a range, okay.
It's a wildlife management area.
Wildlife management area.
I was thinking about it from a safety point of view.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's, Martha's last point here is something that you should really, that having those homes, the last homes, is far away from the property line, it does make sense.
Yes.
And is, the regulation says 500 feet?
Well, it's 500 feet from a residence, and we had this issue with a previous subdivision where the Fish and Wildlife was very concerned about restricting the area within Martin Burns for, for hunting, because it was, you know, bought through...
So close. They say nothing of the hunters. Fortunately, when they came in, all 40 of them, they were not armed. They weren't happy.
Any other comments?
John, any, any other comments?
No, I'd like to take this home and read it, you know, study it. I read that OSRD by law.
Yeah, in a while, neither.
In a while.
Right now.
What should we be directing them to do, aside from the little conversation we've had back and forth, anything specific, or just...
Wait, can I interrupt?
Yep.
Sure. What I would suggest is, I know you guys got some information tonight you hadn't seen before. If you would take a week or whatever to review it, review your regulations, and get any comments to Martha that you may have, that then we could, you know, look at and incorporate into our next iteration of this, and as we move forward.
Okay, Martha will send you a note that incorporates more than what she's already sent to you.
Okay. Rick's sitting there, I'll tell you, it's as soon as possible. No, we understand that this process takes time, you know, the open space process especially. We have to get a landscape architect, we have to finish the survey, we have to really lay it out, you know, as per your regulations. We're going to keep it moving, but you're not going to see a submittal in the next two weeks or the next month, and it's going to take a little bit of time to get something into you.
That's yours, I think, I didn't, wasn't thinking.
Martha, any, any other thoughts or comments?
Not right now.
Anybody in the audience like to make a comment?
That's one question. Would the board have any interest in going to do a site walk?
Yes, and I was just thinking about the appropriate time to do that, and...
Maybe after the TIC was done.
In the low TIC season.
Yeah, well, that's when there's three feet of snow on the ground.
Yes, I think, I don't know, we'll, do you want to, would you want to schedule it now, or you want, I might want to do it after...
Only time to do it, you know. It's the only time to do it if we're going to respond to Eric's request.
Yeah.
And I guess there are two, you know, we, we could either go out and walk it now and just get a sense, I would imagine we'd probably do it twice, once potentially before the plan comes in, just to get a sense of the lay of the land, and then after a plan comes in to...
I think so. I think this is important enough to do that. So perhaps we could do it in the next couple of weeks, or next three weeks? Do you want to schedule it now, or think about it, and we'll schedule it at the end? Well, we need, we need, we need to get access from whoever the prop, who's the property owner?
Right here.
Yeah, the whole bunch of them.
I missed that one, sorry.
The property owner.
The property owner.
That's all you guys.
Well, it's free for the city.
So we need permission from you to walk on the land.
Absolutely.
And if you want me there, just tell me when, and I'll...
Probably, probably.
Tell me when, and I'll be there.
And if you had a landscaper on board, he or she too.
Yep.
What's the will of the board, and when you want to do this?
When are you leaving?
Saturday. But I, I'm back on the 15th? You could do a...
Sounds like tomorrow or the next day, doesn't it?
Or, or you guys can do it, and I can do a separate one when I get back.
June 18, then? That's what the risk is. 18th of June. You guys have all the stuff, yes?
And do you, do you anticipate that you, the board's next meeting is going to be on the 17th of June? Do you anticipate you'd have anything to us before that?
No, no official submittal, no, no. I will get you the, the plan request with the aerial.
Yep.
I'll get that to you, you know, later this week, early next week, but we'll be still working on...
How about Monday, Monday or Tuesday, the 15th or 16th of June?
We could do that.
Just before the meeting.
Right, although Eric said he won't have anything to us by then, but if we want to talk about it at the meeting, yeah.
I still think it's worthwhile going to see the site.
Yeah, I do, too.
But that's not going to change.
And then, once you've got some stuff, then we can go back if we want to. So if we can do it on the 15th, is it, can you do either of those things?
What is the date, 15th?
15th or 16th.
Do you want it done in daylight?
Want to pick one?
Board's pleasure.
Either day, it's fine.
What day of the week are these?
Monday and Tuesday.
Tuesday works better for me, because I'm just beginning.
Good, okay. 16th, Tuesday the 16th is what we're doing?
16th, let's do that.
Let's do the 16th.
Elizabeth, if we did it early in the morning, could you do it, or is it...
Earlier's better.
Eight or 8:30? We have done meetings at 8:00 or 8:30, 7:30?
Eight would be good.
I can do 7:30.
What time do the ticks wake up?
Let's say 8 o'clock on Tuesday morning.
That increases my ability to do it.
Yeah, let's try, 8 o'clock on Tuesday, the 16th.
Where do we meet, Jim's driveway, or?
Yeah, is that all right?
Reasonable.
Do you have space there for like five or six cars?
Take a five.
Okay. You cooking breakfast, Jim?
Yes.
I know.
Okay, so June 16th?
We can have a barbecue, what's...
I was going to say sausage with a pancake would be really cool, Jim.
Any other questions?
What is the street address?
Pardon?
What is the street address?
Street address.
131.
Okay, thank you.
It's a red house up on the hill.
Yeah.
South side of the road.
Okay.
Just before our meeting, then?
Just before the meeting, day before. Okay, any other comments from anyone? You're on your way.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate your coming before us sooner rather than later.
Yeah, this should happen more often, we talked about it earlier, and we saved a racing.
This would be good to have. I mean, we haven't had a subdivision in a long time.
Is that 131?
Yes.
What, what's the reference to the bylaws, is it here?
OSRD?
Yeah.
Yep. And that should be in your...
It's a section of zoning.
It's a section of zoning, not of subdivision regulations. Am I right? No, it's the opposite?
It's zoning.
It's in zoning, right?
Well, it's in zoning, but then there's a separate rules and regulations, which is in our general bylaws. I can't remember what chapter it is, but that goes hand in hand, and there's a reference to that in our OSRD bylaw.
The rules and regs are not in the OSRD bylaws.
They're separate. They, they were before, and remember, we went through the whole reorganization that David sort of spearheaded, and they're now separate.
They're now...
Yep.
Separated, you mean irretrievable for people like me.
I'll get your copy.
Thank you. Well, before, let me give it a shot.
Okay.
All right, next item is the decision special permit application. Has everyone had a chance to read the final change?
I was good with it.
Decision?
All right, so... I have hard copies, if anybody needs one.
Okay.
I'm good.
If you don't need them, then could I have a motion?
Ah, yes, I will be, accept a decision as drawn for a special permit application on covering 48 Old Riley Road for home-based animal breeding kennel by applicant Lee Support.
Second?
Second.
All those, oh, any discussion further? No?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Two unanimous.
Yes.
So I've got three copies here for you to sign. I will amend, not knowing exactly how the vote was going to go, I left some blanks, so I will amend those, but it doesn't affect the, you know, just put in, it was unanimous, and doesn't affect the signature page, so...
Okay, and this is on record of vote.
Right.
Any reason why?
I'm looking at the top line for you.
All right.
Would not want to be so presumptuous as to have a signature above the chair.
Oh, boy.
Yeah.
Did you have either a cold or an allergy?
I think it's a combination, and right now I sound as healthy as a horse.
Well, horses tend to be kind of healthy, though, so I don't know.
No, I'm saying, I'm in good shape right now.
Oh, good.
Compared to where you were.
I don't think I signed the third one, did I?
Thank you very much. So this, this afternoon, we did have two firms show up for the pre-proposal discussion. It was interesting. One firm is called Community Opportunities Group. They're from downtown Boston on Kingston Street. Another is really not a firm, it's an individual who's an environmental engineer and land use planner, who is really looking to hook up with a prime consultant. We didn't really hear from the others. 21 people received the RFP, so we don't really know the, the RFP is due on June the 15th, and so we'll have to see who submits, and...
So there were only two that showed up?
Yes.
So we'll see what we get on the 15th, and we will distribute them to the review group, which will be, what was it, us, or you and John?
Yep.
And then we wanted, I haven't heard back from Larry Gay... And then we wanted, I haven't heard back from Larry Gay, but I have heard back from Marshall Jespersen. And Jeff is waiting to hear, just, I guess he needs to get through a couple of meetings before they find out who's going to replace David, who was the original rep, David Mountain.
Okay.
And they want to put a new person on that. We don't know who that's going to be. And then we're waiting, we have seven or eight individuals now who have expressed an interest from the community to be, from the residents.
Yeah, in being on the committee.
And being on the committee, which is, which is pretty good. We could still use more.
Is it a diversified group?
It's not too bad, but there are some, yeah, I'd say it's diverse. I think it's as diverse as maybe we can, we can ask for. But we are, we are in discussion with Triton for a student. And the woman who's the superintendent, superintendent, principal, prin-
Principal, yeah.
Principal is in the process of finding a student that she said she'll have somebody in the next two weeks or so who she can assign to it. And so, we'll just, I think that we were going to do, see, wait until the, our next meeting before we confirm this group, only because we don't know what we're going to get yet from the consultant community.
Yep.
So, once we see what that is, it may mean we have to push the process back a bit, but I'd rather not get the entire committee up and running if we get one or no responses to the RFP. So, I think that's the game plan right now is to-
Is there any plan to interview them?
Oh, yeah, I mean, but-
Okay, all right.
Once, the process would be, if we get three or four, is to have a group review then and make recommendations to either interview them all, three, two, or one.
I see.
And then set up an interview process and then make the selection.
Okay.
Which, were you talking about interviewing the entities submitting for the RFP or the members for the committee?
Um, right now, oh, 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 I-
What I was referring to is the plant, the master plan.
Yeah, that's what I was referring to. I don't know what to do about, should we interview the people who have expressed an interest in the committee or just accept them? I, these are residents of the town, I, I don't know, John, I, I mean, it's, you know, Fred.
Fred, oh, yeah.
Yeah.
You know, Marlene.
Okay.
Dan Streeter.
Yep.
And then some folks we don't know.
Right, and Carla.
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 But if you move.
Depends on when we move.
Right. Yeah, so, it starts, you can start with a start on it.
But we've got, and I will say it's a little, little heavily weighted to Old Town, but we have Byfield and we do potentially have Plum Island.
Okay, who do we have from Byfield?
Um, a woman named Robin Lawson.
Robin Lawson.
She's responding to the outreach that we made. And then another fellow who lives on Rolle Lane. And then we've had discussions, well, you've had discussions with Rick Barrett.
Ron Barrett.
Ron Barrett.
Right.
And he said he'd have an interest in doing it, and if he didn't serve, he'd find someone to do it from Plum Island.
I had a conversation with a woman from Plum Island and I encouraged her to call you.
Oh, excellent.
But it sounds like she didn't.
Not yet.
So, maybe I'll follow up there.
Okay. That would be great.
So, I think, I think that's about it right now. Any, any further questions on it? It's still slower than we wanted, but hopefully we get a good people. This group, oh, by the way, so I wanted to tell you, so I did go online. And they're, this is a large firm. They've got like, it looks like fifteen to twenty professional, either planners or architects, plus three or four other folks. I think they might do a lot of facilitation.
Who are they?
It's called... Which I'd never heard of.
Roberta Cameron.
Mitchell.
No relation, right.
Roberta Mitchell Cameron.
I skip over that. I can only, all I can do remembering a first and a last name. That middle one is too much of a challenge. Okay, and who's the other firm?
Yeah, I think he's-
Oh, Christ, I know him.
A different-
Do you? Yeah, yeah, it's a buddy, well, sort of a buddy. I ran into him at a seminar in the transportation building in Boston. It was a bunch of Fed agencies, NOAA, et cetera, on sea level rise. And he has connections, family connections here. He lives in Boxborough. And I don't think him, of him as a planner, planner.
He doesn't either.
Oh, okay, he was straight up with you.
He said, "I am not here to be a prime on this. I'm looking for subwork."
Oh, okay. His, his field is storm order. He's a, he does a lot of industrial storm order EPA permits. He has been tracking the MS four thing that is working its way torturably, tortuously out of EPA. And he comes to town every two or three months. We have lunch, take turns. He's a good guy.
He said he's from Rowley?
Quite knowledgeable.
Said he's from Rowley?
Pardon?
Born in Rowley?
Well, he's, he's got a relative that lives in Rowley. Who I met one time on a job that never happened.
Yeah.
So, I haven't really worked with him, but I worked with him on a, on a job that went away. But yeah, he's got, he's got, he's got a brother in Rowley, I think it's Rowley. But yeah, he's a, he's a solid guy, I would say.
He's also interested in, in planning for agriculture. Those are environmental and agricultural, I think, are his two.
He is a farmer. He's, he's a, he does the farming on the side.
Couldn't have two more.
Engineering on the side. I don't know which, to be honest.
Yeah, I mean, you really couldn't.
Actually, a lot of his farm extends out to other farms.
Oh, really?
If you feel that the pool that we've received as a result of trying to send the word out on these RFPs is insufficient, would it be an idea to see if we can get some help from the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission?
That's a good, that's a good thought. I think we'll go, we'll wait until see what we get on the fifteenth.
Okay, yeah.
And then we'll reach out. But, you know, it's interesting, one of the things that he said was that MapC is actually doing the master plan for Boxborough.
Oh, are they?
Which is interesting.
Interesting.
And so, I don't think we get the same from MVPC though. Okay, anything else on the master plan or anything to do with that? Election of officers. Do we have to do this today?
I think the only, the only one that may be-
It's not like we don't have time.
Ellen has been trying to put together a list of appointments for the selectman's next meeting, which will be June twenty-third. And I think Representative to the Concom is one that she needs to get reappointed, so.
All right, let's do it. All right, for chair?
John Weiss.
Discussion?
None needed.
None needed.
A second.
Really? Any comment, any discussion on it? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Vice Chair? George?
Second.
Thank you.
Any discussion?
None.
All those in favor?
Aye.
This is easier than I thought. Clerk? Who's the clerk now? Are you the clerk?
I'm the clerk.
Yeah, we might not, we may not want to nominate him if he's going to leave. Do you want to nominate him and then get into it? No. So, clerk?
Richard.
Second.
All those in favor? Concom rep? Well, I, obviously, it's got to be John.
John.
All right, now I second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
MVPC Commissioner? So, that's me now.
Just you.
Yeah, I think at least for another year. I'm still, I don't mind telling you, I, I'm trying to understand the way it operates. And it's not, it's not a typical kind of planning operate that I'm used to. And a lot of the work that we do as commissioners is very pro forma kind of stuff. And so, candidly, I'd like to have more discussion about policy issues with the commission. And I've tried to do that with things like sea level rise and some of the demographic information that was off base, so. So, I just as a report to you that I'm going to continue to try to do that and find more of a discussion on these kinds of... Because I observe things like MapC, and MapC is doing enormous amounts of work. I don't want to compare the two because MapC has so much more resources. But, so I, I'll continue to do that though. But thank you.
Well, I think the, the new organization with Joe Cosgrove being the head environmental guy is a definite improvement. He's got, I think, he's a-
Oh, that's good to hear.
I'm quite pleased with him. I thought it was a major step forward. His program, I guess it's his, for the DPW directors, unfortunately, there's a few that are totally missing in action. I don't know why. They, we never see them. But they put on some good, a good show. Hosely and Witten did an excellent three-week morning sessions for DPW, good housekeeping issues, which is number six of the six minimum control measures required. And I thought they did a terrific job.
Well, you know, that's really nice to hear. I knew that they were doing good work on the MS four. And, and I wasn't aware of the other outreach. And their transportation stuff is-
That is all MS four. I've been setting up a couple of them.
And certainly the transportation work is always, always fine, so I just have to work on some other kinds of things.
And also the techni- the mapping and everything that Gerard does for us is fantastic.
Right, right. I'm talking about the meetings I go to.
Yeah. So, I guess we need a nomination and a second for the commissioner.
But they, no, they did. Somebody did, didn't they?
I don't think so.
They recommend John Weiss to be the MVPC commissioner.
Okay.
Can I second that?
All those in favor?
Aye.
I accept. Wait, oh, now we have MVPC alternate. Well, that can only be Martha.
Martha.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
ZBA rep? Have you had?
Which is currently George.
Have you had one or two?
Haven't had any yet. I'll volunteer again.
I nominate George.
Good man, George.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That passes. Okay, so those are all done? The liaison reports, the BOs?
Yes, the big, the big news from the selectman's meeting last night is that Borrego has submitted a request to withdraw their application for the one thirty-six Main Street Without Prejudice. It will, presumably, they will be submitting to the planning board at some point, but we need to get confirmation on the appropriate time since it's a zoning change and has to be approved by the Attorney General.
Our, I mean, a town meeting chairman.
Yep.
Might be good to get a fifth member. Otherwise, we're back in the same situation.
Yeah, no, we need to, we need to get our associate and-
We have, we need an associate and we'll need a replacement for Richard.
Right.
Martha, was there any reason given for why they're withdrawing from the Board of Selectmen? After all, they could continue with the Board of Selectmen.
They could, they did not give any reason.
They did not.
It's just a simple request.
Okay.
So-
Might be good to push for alternates too at this point while we're looking for another member.
Oh, no, we're going to go, we need, we need both.
Yeah, we need, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, because-
We haven't, we're going to put something in the paper for the alternate. And my guess is we should probably put one for the permanent measure. Can we do that if Richard is still here?
Let me check on that and see. I mean, it would be nice, certainly nice to have somebody to be able to step in because if the, if the Scotland Road project goes through the OSRD as a special permit and we will potentially have the Borrego special permit as well.
You know, this is a suggestion, this is something you might think about, is having a little stand in the library. That's a focus. People come in there all the time and saying, you know, are you interested in becoming a member of the planning board?
Where could we put it?
On a stand in the library.
Once you get in, inside?
Inside, yes. Little stand there. I'm sure that the librarians would go along with it and it might help us out.
I think either of those will be interesting.
I think it's a great idea because when I put the ad in for the RFP committee, I was told that-
I have, and I don't know.
Put it outside on the, on the bulletin board.
No one still- No one looks at that.
No one looks at that.
No, I agree, I agree. But in the library.
In the library.
Put in the fourth statement.
Yes.
Well, I'm going to go and take a look at that.
Good, okay.
Thank you. Anything else, BOs?
The other, the other discussion is a follow-up from town meeting to schedule a special, another special election regarding the public safety building.
Right.
As everybody probably knows, the two trailers have been condemned. We now have two trailers, one in the parking lot and one over in the side of the building to replace those. So, those will be housing Board of Health, Fire Chief in that one and police functions over in the one on the side. So, need is dire.
I guess the only question that we talked about earlier today was whether, once these are down, they're going to demolish them on site, whether or not these are moved back to those places. Do you know, do you ever find that out?
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know. Those were declared surplus last night for scrap or whatever.
So, it's prob- one of the things I was unclear of, the selectmen have to call a, an election within ninety days or they have to call the election within ninety days?
It's actually, it was within, the election would have to take place within ninety days if the vote was taken at a special town meeting. We have until September fifteenth to have an election, since it was done at a regular town meeting, annual town meeting.
Okay, so that's, what is that to make, June, July, oh, so that's four months?
Right.
Hundred and twenty days roughly.
Martha, is it-
Probably better than nothing.
Because they, is there any way that those trailers that are now condemned could possibly be used during the construction process? Not to be habited, but just as a storage place. There's always need for storage during an ongoing construction process. And they might be able to-
Yeah, good question. I don't know.
Okay.
Okay, for, actually, on MVPC, there are some things I want to report on. First of all, they, this is their annual report. If you have an interest in taking a look at it. And if you want to, I can get copies for you.
This is usually online. Is this one, have they put this out?
I don't know that is online. Their Economic Development Strategy is online. That's, that's-
I thought this came out online.
That's their annual report. They weren't, they didn't tell us it was online.
Yeah, they usually mail copies to the, all the planning board members, but I haven't, is this hot off the press or is it?
Just got it last, last Thursday night. But the other, other issues that we're talking about was they are updating their economic development strategy and that is online. And I have looked at that and will get them some comments. And so, if anybody has an interest in their, it's called CEDS, Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy Update. It was originally done in, I think, oh nine or ten, and so that's being updated. They're doing a permitting guide, guidebook for the town of Georgetown, which I thought was interesting. And also, oh, so John, they talked about, did you go to that meeting today?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
How was, they, because Joe talked about that.
Yeah, it was, unfortunately, the only three of the six of us made it there. Joe was there representing MVPC. I think it's, I'm, my mood is improving. I think basically, we sat down, I tell you, Doug has tremendous knowledge of this town. He was there and wow, I'm so glad he was. The young lady from Iffler's River basically prodded us with questions and she took notes and it's going to come back.
Now, is she, are they running it?
They are running it. They, they're a subcontractor to the National Wildlife Federation, who in turn received the grant for Fish and Wildlife. And Fish and Wildlife, of course, is part of the, of the interior, so it's interior money to Fish and Wildlife, to National Wildlife, to Iffler's. And we went through, you know, rounded up the usual suspects, Plum Island, circulation roads that are going to have to be abandoned or something has to happen. But what they call, it's, it's got its own set of jargon, you know, what they're calling, what's the word? I can't even think what the word is. Basically, they're constrictions in the flow of water, bridges that are, waterway is too small. We went through those that we, that we could think of, and there's quite a few of them affecting Ubre, toward far more than affecting Ubre. We went through those that we, that we could think of, and there's quite a few of them, affecting Newburyport far more than affecting Newbury. So she's going to take that, put that together, and we should see that in about three weeks. We're meeting again about the middle of July for the second meeting with the towns.
How does that process in your mind fit into or not fit into the master plan process that we're going to start?
Oh, I think it does. I, I think what probably needs to happen is, is whatever comes out of this gets distilled.
Yeah.
But I think by the time the master plan is underway, I can write something out that represents what we're up to. Bounce it off Wayne Cashin Gay.
Good, good.
Submit it to the planning board.
That's great. Was, was Jeff there? Was Jeff part of the group?
Unfortunately. Debbie had a clo, was closing on a house and I forget what happened to, oh, Martha.
Yeah.
What, what was going on there, Martha? Mostly Martha. So I think that's about it. They did give, they did say, and I can't believe this, that the Woodyer Bridge is going to be complete on the new construction by the end of the fall, but the entire project won't be complete for another year because they have to tear down the rest. And, and they got a lot of demo work to do. So that sounds faster than I expected it to be.
That's a huge...
It's a big project.
That's a huge, four hundred million, four hundred million dollars. It's a big, big project. But that's kind of encouraging. So they were denied permission to demolish the bridge. EPA would not let them demolish it. I mean, demolish with, with blow up.
Oh.
So they got to take it apart piece by piece?
They have to do, they're allowed to do some minor demolition, what's the word, I'm, we are using explosives.
Not nuclear.
Not nuclear. I guess at the base, but not at the rest of it for some reason.
Hmm, interesting.
Well, they don't think that they can protect the river.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And so, anyway, that's it for MVPC.
Did, did anybody do the pictometry training last week?
I did it online for about forty-five minutes and then I fell asleep. Not really, but it was, wait, it was beyond it. It was just not, not my, not my train set. So, but they are having the MIMAP tomorrow.
MIMAP tomorrow, yeah. Is anybody going to that besides, I'm, I'm going.
Oh, you are?
Topology?
Yeah, because...
No, it's the MIMAP.
The MIMAP, yeah, yeah. There's a whole new search function there that Gerard thinks is pretty powerful, so I want to get...
So if you, what do you work on when you, when you go to that? Do you work on a PC or if you have a Mac, can you work on the Mac?
Um, I think they're doing it in the computer lab there, so we're all going to have access to their, their computers. It'll be, I can't remember what building it's in.
So, so you work on, we'll probably, you'll see them, right?
I think they're PCs. I think so.
Okay, John, anything?
Would that be of any help?
Yeah, anything on the Concom?
What's that?
Concom?
No, the biggest thing was, was the Borrego solar thing. And that is kind of at parade rest for the moment, so we're not, we're not moving on it.
So you hold off until we get it again? Until we get it?
I don't, I can't speak for Doug, but that's my understanding. I don't see this much point in, in doing that until it, until it becomes an active job again.
Any other issues that people, you're not, those EBA is, right?
Those EBA, there are two items for the agenda on June eleventh. I'll let you know what they are once we have the meeting.
Thank you. Anything else for the good of the order? Oh, we should talk about the July and August schedule.
Oh, right.
Last year, I think we, did we take the month of August off? And so with this project coming in, we thought maybe we'd just have one meeting in July and one meeting in August.
Mine was Nathan. You have two for us after.
And that mirrors, I think, what the Board of Selectmen are doing.
Right. So do you want to?
This is not...
Want to pick out a...
Want to pick those dates right now or?
Yeah, I don't have my...
Should I take this home?
Sure.
July would be first or fifteenth?
First or fifteenth? Well, we're meeting on the seventeenth, so I think it should be the fifteenth.
Okay.
Does everyone, you know, right? Yeah, thanks. And then, yeah, the fifteenth. And then the next one would be August?
Fifth or nineteenth?
Nineteenth.
I will most likely be away the fifth.
The fifth of August?
Yep.
So the nineteenth works for you?
That's better.
So let's go the nineteenth.
So we got nineteen August, what was that, July?
Fifteenth.
July fifteenth and nineteen August.
And you're going to send this out, right, Martha?
Uh, I will.
Okay.
And if there's anything that comes up that's time sensitive, then...
We can take it from there.
And then in, in June, we're only meeting on the seventeenth?
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
But on the sixteenth, we're going for a walk.
On the sixteenth, we're going for a walk.
That's true.
Okay, the homework we have is really to review Martha's notes on one thirty-one Scotland Road, review the site plan, get comments to her, and then we'll get comments to the developer. If you all want to see this other project, you...
Did you want this back?
No, it's okay. I'd encourage you to go look at this, the work that this company has done. It's not bad.
They have a good reputation.
Yeah, so hopefully we get something good.
Maybe you could send us what the address is. I have no idea where they're worked.
It's pretty easy to find, Richard. If you, you know where the bus, the park and ride is in New York Park?
Yeah, the C and J.
CJ.
Yes.
It's kind of crossed the street.
Oh, I know where it is. Yeah, we were, Carl and I, we looked at it when we were thinking.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, yeah. We didn't go inside, but, yeah.
Is it very tight?
Yes.
Tight.
Yeah.
It's like, it's like, it's called, New Urbanism.
Yeah, it's right on ninety-five.
New Urbanism is...
It runs parallel, yeah.
Runs parallel.
Something like that, down there?
Algalene?
It's Oleo, Oleo Woods.
Oleo Woods, okay. I think I've named the street. Was it Oleo Street or something?
I don't remember.
Something, I think there are several street names in there, but it's all off of Russell.
Russell, yeah.
Russell Terrace.
One of the things that a, you know, a good friend of mine who has a niece who lives there, moved there from downtown Newburyport. And so I went to pick him up. He was spending a couple of days there. And it was a Saturday afternoon in October. The entire street was filled with kids playing.
Oh, that's nice.
It was just unbelievable.
Things you get in the cul-de-sac, there's no true traffic, yeah.
I mean, it's just, I mean, everybody, all the kid, you know, between three and eleven or something like that. I mean, there's, everybody was talking to everyone. I was just very, it was, it looked pretty good. And we talked to her recently and she's still feeling that it's a great place to live, so I said, "That's not bad." But it is all first-time home buyers. And the price points were five?
Yeah, I think they started at the high fours and they're up in fives now.
Yeah. They're not big. They're...
Yeah, they're modest, two thousand, twenty-one hundred, maybe.
I think that sounds about right. Two thousand square feet or something like that. Okay. A motion to adjourn.
Shall we adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
Good job. You almost beat the deadline.